I call this meeting of the Sholo City Council to order show that all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor asked to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Judd to lead us in the invocation followed by myself and lead us in the pledge. If you all like to stand, you can join us.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet in City Council today. We're grateful for many blessings that we have in this beautiful city that we have to live in. We're grateful for the citizens that make this home. We're grateful for our first responders, our police officers, our military and our firefighters, and we ask that thou watch over and bless them, protect them. Grateful for city staff, and this time, we're especially grateful for Mrs. Bilby, Carrie Bilby, and all the service that she's offered to our town. We ask that thou will continue to bless us, and we say, "See thee in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ." Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Judd. Appreciate that. Hope everybody had a good Christmas and a happy new year. I know it's been cold. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. Any citizen desire? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll turn it over to the city attorney. I'll learn someday.
Thank you, Mayor. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of City Council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual City Council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, and ask the matter be put on a future agenda.
Seeing none, I move to next item on the agenda under special events. We'd like to recognize retired city employee Carrie Bilby. You're still not smiling. Smile. There you go.
We're gonna miss this.
Mayor, tonight, we would like to recognize retired employee. I think on your agenda, it says retiring, but she is officially retired as of yesterday. So today was her first day in retirement. Thirty years of service from 1994 to 2025. Just a few notes on some of her dates with her positions to keep me on track here. So in July of 94, hired as an aquatic center receptionist part-time, and then November, transferred to finance as an account clerk full-time. December of 99, transferred to human resources as a clerk, and September of 2003, transferred to Public Works as an admin. And during the next 11 years with Public Works, she received the Employee of the Year Award three times. In June of 2014, served as Acting Public Works Operations Coordinator, and July of 2014, moved to move from Public Works to Finance as an Account Clerk III. And this is not work-related, but I'm sure she won't mind if I mention that. On January 18th, 2015, she made a hole in one. That's Stallion Mountain Golf Club in Las Vegas. So wanted to throw that out there. November of 2015, promoted to Account Clerk, from Account Clerk III to Administrative Services Analyst. In February of 2018, promoted to Accountant, and in July of 2019, promoted from Accountant to Accounting Manager. So thirty-plus years of service. She's been a great dedicated employee to the city. She's a hard worker. She's one of the most driven people I've ever had the opportunity to work with, and we appreciate all the service that she's provided to the city. And she's been a tremendous asset to the Finance Department and to the city as a whole, and we'd just like to thank her for her service and wish her and Richard a happy retirement. I hope she's had a lot of good time with her family. So with that said, I'd like to turn some time over to Carrie. She'd like to say anything.
No, just thank you. It's been a great thirty years. So started in 94, married in 95, first child in 96, second child in 98. So you guys have been there all along the way.
First year of marriage was tough, I'm sure.
Well, you know.
That's my point.
Anyway, you guys have, when we tell new hires that City of Sholo is a family-oriented company, I can give all kinds of testament to that. You guys have been with me through many family issues and many family trying times, and I'm still here. And I just, because Justin didn't say it, but I'll be back on Tuesday. I am coming back part-time for a little while, so you'll still see me through budget.
Well, I know, Carrie, probably nobody in this room can thank you enough for what you've done. I can tell you, you know, with Justin and yourself working on the budget, up here, working on the budget is so much easier with your help. And like I said, we'll never be able to thank you enough. Hard to replace, we know that already. But, you know, I've known Richard and Carrie forever, was at their wedding for a while until we got into trouble. Richard's a bad example, but I've known them and their kids forever, and you know, Carrie's a grandma now, so it's time to spend some time with your grandkids. But like I said, we can never thank you enough, no matter what we give you, what we say, what we can do, we just thank you. Anybody else?
Just real quick, I've worked for corporate America, and you know, it feels like sometimes you leave and no one notices or cares, and you're just in this big conglomerate, and I appreciate what you said. It really does feel like a family here, and you feel like part of the family, so thank you for all your years.
I'm not going far.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't realize you were retiring last time we had our council meeting, and I thank you for what you did on the budget. And I want to reiterate those comments, but I honestly can't believe you've been working here for thirty years. You don't look old enough to. Richard, on the other hand, he looks older than dirt. But you, you look phenomenal for somebody who's been able to retire. And one of the things that I kid about the Bilbys and Richard, but this is something that, we were talking about the city, and what a lot of people don't know about, and probably do know actually, is they're not just a city employee who's retiring. This is a heart and soul of our community. I don't know how many times I've been to a golf tournament, a fundraising event, or something along those lines, and Richard and Carrie are there with their family, and they're either running it or they're helping support it, they're donating their time and their efforts. And I know, you know, yours and Richard's business has been right there in the downtown area for as long as I can remember. And so I, you know, Mayor says we can't thank you enough. I can't thank you enough for what you've done for the city, but also for the community. Because you, you know, and Justin was talking about how much of a hard worker, I don't know how the two of you do it, you know, the time and the energy and the effort that you put into not only your job at the city, but to this community. We truly owe you both a deep heartfelt debt of gratitude, because Sholo is a much better place because the two of you have chose to live here. So thank you both for doing that.
I was born here in Sholo. Richard spent most of his life here, so this is our, this is our home.
I have to wager, I'd almost guessed Patty Garber delivered you. Is that, was he?
I honestly couldn't tell you that. But no, it's our home, and you'll continue to see us. We're still out there, we still have our foundation, we'll still be doing stuff, so.
Great.
I just wanted to say how amazed I am that you've been with Richard, stuck with Richard that long. That's amazing.
The job was easy.
So, no, I love, Richard went to school with Richard, been friends, and just good to know you. Thank you so much for everything you've done. I just am so grateful. I've just been truly amazed with all that you've been able to do and how you've done it, and so professional, and we're just so thankful for everything, and I just wanted to know. And thanks for putting up with Richard. We kinda like him.
I'd like to wish you both a happy retirement. You know, it's an expensive thing to get involved in, but it's always great to get to see the people that you have worked around and family a little more than you have up to this point. So God bless you, and you too, sir.
Thank you.
So before you leave, Carrie, we've got you a little something special. We've got you some golf balls, which you probably, this probably isn't enough, but it'll.
Richard's not playing.
Pretty sure this'll get you through eighteen, maybe. And then, there's a city logo on there, and then some golf at Torian.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Love you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A whole room.
Yes.
Bless your heart.
Richard only tried to throw me out of the park.
Congratulations, Carrie. You're awesome.
You can't go begging. I'm not going far. I just hold on to her.
Thank you, Carrie. We should call the meeting after something like that.
I know.
It's almost like we want to go home. Anyway, next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We'll entertain a motion proclaiming by the mayor, January 2025, 2025, is Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Consideration of purchase of water stock parts. Consideration acceptance of well number seventeen. Consideration of approval of supplemental agreement and to amend the related operation system. Consideration of final acceptance of the airport pavement management system. Consideration final acceptance of the airport pavement management system. Consideration approval of pet allies' shelter service. Consideration of First Amendment agreement of sale of real property. Consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council, December 3rd and also December 10th, 2024. Is there anything anybody wants to pull or talk about? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Got a motion, got a second. All those in favor of the motion? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, new business. Consideration of commercial hangar lease and operating agreement with Aero Products Component Services, Inc. at Sholo Regional Airport. Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On November 20th, 2024, the City of Sholo advertised a request for proposals for units two and three of the city-owned commercial hangar located at 3151 Airport Loop Road. The city received two proposals, both from Aero Products Component Services, Inc., one proposal for each of the available units. There were no competing proposals. The terms and conditions of the lease consists of a per-unit lease rate of $2,800 per month plus tax, insurance, and any applicable monthly user fees. The agreement also includes annual Consumer Price Index, or CPI, increase. Aero Products would be responsible for paying all utility costs. The term of the agreement will be for ten years with an expiration date of January 7th, 2035, with an option to renew the agreement for one additional one-year period upon city approval. Staff recommends approving the commercial lease and operating agreement with Aero Products Component Services, Inc. And I'm available if anyone has any questions.
Just to clarify, they're in there now, correct?
Correct. They were actually, yeah, they were in these two hangars, and they just recently acquired the third, so the full city hangar will be leased by Aero Products.
Any questions or comments or motions?
I move to approve the commercial hangar lease and operating agreement with Aero Products Component Services, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Whipple. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate that. I'm sure they're gonna be looking for more soon. They've outgrown where they're at again, so. Next item on the agenda, consideration acceptance of sewage sewer replacement phase one improvement, City of Sholo Project Number S-2624. Approval of the scope revision. Mr. Hamsaw.
Evening, Mayor and Council. At the September 3rd, 2024, City Council meeting, a construction contract was awarded to Apache Underground and Excavating LLC in the amount of $924,036 for the Savage Sewer Replacement Phase One. The scope of the work include removal of existing sewer main and the installation of approximately 2,500 linear feet of new 18-inch SDR-35 PVC sewer main. Project also include installation of nine polymer sewer manholes, sewer services, and the replacement of asphalt and concrete removed from the work. Project was partially funded by Congressional District Spending Grant obtained by the city. The grant award was up to $800,000, requiring a 20% match. Due to the low bid of approximately $925,000, with the city's required match of $185,000, the city was only utilizing about $740,000 of the grant award. As discussed during the award of the construction contract, additional scope would be identified and added to the project in an effort to utilize as much as the federal grant funding as possible during construction. A scope revision to install an additional 450 linear feet of sewer was added to the project to help reduce the scope of the next phase of the improvements and to maximize the use of the grant funds. Scope, or the work for the Savage Sewer Replacement Phase One has been completed with a total project cost of $977,054. This final cost results in a scope provision of $53,018. Eighty percent of that will be paid with grant funds. Any matching funds will be paid by the existing line item in the budget for the project. Staff recommends accepting the Savage Sewer Replacement Phase One, City of Sholo Project Number S-2624, completed by Apache Underground Excavating LLC, at that final project cost of $977,054. Approve the scope provision in the amount of $53,018. Release the retainage and initiate that two-year warranty. The map's attached. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments? Or all motions? Councilman Hatt?
I'll make our recommendation here. I move to accept the Savage Sewer Replacement Phase One, City of Sholo Project Number S-2624, completed by Apache Underground and Excavating LLC, at the final project cost of $977,054. Approve the scope of revision in the amount of $53,018. Release the retainage and initiate a two-year warranty.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution Number R-2025-01, rescinding Resolution Number R-2024-08, and amending incentive policy for workforce housing. Mr. Tregaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, at your regular meeting of February 6th of 2024, City Council adopted Resolution R-2024-08. This resolution recognized the need for workforce housing in the city and provided for incentives for the construction of new multifamily and single-family housing to help address this need. Included in this resolution were qualifying income and rental price limits. These limits are tied to the area median income, or AMI, for specific income levels. Staff was recently approached by a local builder who would like to utilize the incentives to help construct site-built homes under the workforce housing incentives with a proposed sales price of $320,000 per home. After reviewing the AMI limits, it was determined that the maximum financed price for a new home would have to be less than $284,000 for a new home in order to qualify for the workforce housing incentives. It is staff's belief that this number is not practical. Based on this, staff is recommending that Resolution R-2024-08 be rescinded and for council to adopt Resolution Number R-2025-01, amending the incentive policy to workforce housing to reflect that the maximum financed price of a new home be raised to $325,000 with an annual Consumer Price Index, or CPI, inflationary increase in order to qualify for the workforce housing incentives. All other qualifications and requirements would remain unchanged. Essentially, what this does is it sets the threshold limit for a site-built home that is for sale, recognizing that $284,000 is probably not a practical and reasonable number to expect for a new site-built home, and setting that number at $325,000, that number would be able to increase yearly based on inflationary increases. All other items as previously approved by council would remain the same.
Thank you, sir. I actually do have a question. What, would you, how'd you come up with the 325?
So the contractor indicated that he was at 320. We felt maybe a little bit ledge factor on top of that, an extra 5,000, just to give a little bit more breathing room on those homes. That's where we came up with the number.
Thank you. Other questions?
Make a motion.
Questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
Make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number R-2025-01, rescinding Resolution Number R-2024-08, amending the incentive policy for workforce housing.
Thanks, sir. I got a motion, need a second. Got a second by Councilman Whipple. All in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Justin.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of memorandum of understanding with White Mountain Advisory Group. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Tregaskis just presented, there continues to be a lack of workforce housing here in Arizona, including Sholo. Workforce housing supports our local businesses, attracts new investments, and drives long-term economic growth. The city has taken the steps to increase workforce housing through development incentives. There have been a few private projects interested in pursuing the current incentives. The White Mountain Advisory Group has approached the city about a collaboration for the development of a 150-unit workforce apartment housing project. Staff has had several meetings with the advisory group about the proposed location, scope, and development, and the maintenance of the project. The advisory group has the knowledge and the resources to assist the city in the development of the project. The next step would be to enter into a memorandum of understanding, which sets forth a framework for the collaboration and framework for the project. The intention of the MOU is for the parties to collaborate in a good faith, to collaborate in good faith towards the project. However, the MOU is non-binding. Either party may terminate the MOU with 30 days' notice. Mr. Hammett of the advisory group is present with a presentation for council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. I'm Jim Hammett with the advisory group, and I'm pleased to present our proposed project of 150 units of workforce rental housing to be located at East Wolford and 8th Street. The White Mountain Advisory Group is a collaboration of individuals that have worked together for the past 25 years, and we have a very extensive multifamily experience. We have a broad base of capital relationships, and we are experienced developers utilizing public-private partnership structures. In this project, the stakeholders would be the City Council, our impact investors, there would be a city advisory committee that would be part of the management group, and as well as the local employers and community leaders and residents. Our local development team includes Zenny Homes, which is a modular factory that is being built as we speak and tailored. We're working with Ironside Engineering and several other, in conversation with several other local contractors and suppliers. The project is a $35 million rental project consisting of one, two, and three bedrooms, and it'd be modular construction for faster timelines and greater efficiencies. One of the challenges that we found as I was doing my market study is the lack of a general contractor who of a general contractor who has sufficient size and experience to build a project of this, uh, scale and, uh, size. Uh, so what I was really pleased about was developing the relationship with Bob Worzley from Zenny Homes, uh, to provide basically the vertical construction. And what that will do is that will allow us to keep the entire project local, uh, so we'll have the vertical be modular and the site development and utilities will be performed by a local general contractor. As we all know, that, uh, workforce housing provides for educators, first responders, uh, healthcare workers, and, uh, hospitality and service providers, and it, uh, is an economic, uh, indicator. The, uh, project is currently zoned as a PUD on fourteen-point-eight acres at East Wolford and Eighth Street. Uh, it's zoned for a hundred-and-fifty units, and that's what we have gauged our project at. Um, the purpose of this, uh, MOU is to enable us to do a feasibility, to do the due diligence. And as we work through all those, uh, the numbers and we're able to come up with all of the criteria to be able to make a solid decision, then, um, that number may go up, may go down, but we'll have, uh, a project-related market study that will give us the indicators of what the mix and the demand will be. Um, as we've, as had been discussed earlier, workforce housing matters, uh, just to help stabilize the, the market that has been created, uh, the inventory dedicated to workforce. Right now, the city, uh, has a large inventory of, uh, short-term rentals as well as seasonal homes, and that impacts the employees' ability to live locally. The economic impact of this project is, I think, is a secondary, uh, effect that has great benefit. We have, with the locally-focused development team, um, that strategy leverages the development budget to, uh, an estimated seventy million dollars of economic impact just by secondary spending and leakage from, uh, the contractors and employees. It'll provide approximately three-hundred-and-twenty direct and indirect project-related jobs, generating one-point-six million dollars in, uh, project, uh, related sales tax resident revenue with a million, uh, point five, one-point-five million, uh, annual resident spending. And then it will, under our local strategy, it will also increase the capacity for local construction companies and suppliers. The timeline on this project is the MOU is valid for sixty days in which we'll be performing our due diligence. Uh, once planning approvals are, are complete, there'll be six months for that phase. The construction would start six months post-funding, and completion would be eighteen months after the construction begins. The framework for the workforce housing success is that nationally, it has, the free market is not able to provide, uh, private equity for workforce housing. It, the municipal participation is really required due to, uh, restricted revenues and enforced duration of the affordability, uh, covenants. Our, the funding model that, uh, one of the funding models that we're looking at is a build-to-suit lease-back model, which, uh, minimizes the city's financial risk. We accomplish that through public-private partnerships, uh, employer commitments. Major employers are being impacted by the lack of housing, and in conversation, I've been told that the college can increase its nursing program by forty students if it only had housing. So this is an opportunity that we could speak with the college to provide twenty units dedicated to the nursing students. Then with our, the risk mitigation is really what this MOU is all about. It provides the opportunity to do our extensive due diligence, uh, to perform feasibility study, project-related, uh, market, uh, study, the preliminary design, financial underwriting, and to secure the employer, uh, commitments. Additionally, we'll be negotiating with our impact investors to commit, uh, to fund the project under favorable terms and conditions. The next steps is, uh, is the, uh, approval of this MOU, which is non-binding. Uh, we can do all of our due diligence, and at the end of the project, we have sufficient information that it's a yes or no, what makes sense, and that's what this is, uh, for. So your approval of the MOU tonight will initiate that sixty-day due diligence, uh, which we will start to, uh, conduct our market studies and, uh, financial underwriting and secure our funding commitments, and then present our findings and secure our city council approval, uh, to proceed at the end of that period. And that's, uh, essentially the, uh, program in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm sure as we move forward on this, we're going to have a ton of questions. I guess what I'm kind of curious about, what made you decide, the White Mountain Advisory Group, decide Shoal? What, you had to start somewhere, where, why, why?
I, I actually, uh, moved to Shoal six months ago. And in, as part of that move, it became apparent of the lack of workforce housing. And I've been doing workforce housing for a long time now, so it seemed like a natural fit. I really enjoy the quality of life here, and I helped fulfill the need for the housing.
Thank you. Anybody down there?
I think it was on the second slide, you mentioned one of the groups is going to be pre-manufacturing part of the, the housing. Can we go back to that slide? It was the second or third one? I'm just curious, you, you mentioned that's being built in Taylor. Is there a reason you chose Taylor and not here in Shoal to have that? I, I would prefer to see that money stay here in Shoal, but it's not necessarily a deal breaker. I'm curious what the reason was behind that.
Well, that, that's because that's where the factory is being located. Zenny Homes has a factory in Page, and they're, uh, opening a second, uh, factory in Taylor. And what that does is that, with modular construction logistics of moving the unit to the project site is one of the major expenses. And just by having that less of a, uh, a haulage with your trucks, it will save over seven-hundred-thousand dollars for the project. And my initial conversation with Mr. Worzley was to locate the factory in Shoal, but he was already too far down the path and has other interests that the...
Already committed to the, the Taylor. Thank you.
Um, I have a question, Mayor. You said it's a modular, is, is this one-story, two-story, or we're not that far yet?
It'll be a two-story walk-up.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question.
Two-story what?
Walk-up.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? I know we, this is just an agreement, there's no, there's no money right now, and this is just to get forward on the study, and I'm glad it's a, and then our binding is thirty day. I know this is a sixty day, and it comes back for the second phase, but the contract is like, or the agreement is like thirty days, correct? Sorta?
We, we could cancel, cancel the MOU with thirty days' notice.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Comments, motions? Need a motion? Put your stuff away?
I've got it.
Councilman Judd?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with White Mountain Advisory Group.
Got a motion, need a second? Got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. I'm, I'm really excited to see where this goes, I, I really am. I know we've talked about this before, and I'm just curious of how this all works and how it goes. We know we need affordable, uh, workforce housing. I'm just curious to see how this is all going to develop. I think the location's probably one of the better ones in Shoal because of the location at the end of town, right there on, uh, sixty, or two-sixty, and Old Linden, which we just got, or not Old Linden, Wolford. Anyway, looking to work with you and seeing where this goes, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming over. I guess I could have asked, you guys needed to go on executive session, but I did, because I didn't think you needed to, so, gonna move on. Okay, next item on the agenda. Summer of current events. It's quiet through the holidays. I, just, uh, you know, there was a lot of things that happened in town during Christmas and New Year, and all of it was good. I, I seen lots of excitement, I was really excited. I haven't been to the Deuce Club's drop in, in years. Um, unfortunately, I was always out of town, but I did go this year, and it was, it was really exciting, it was really cool. Um, Councilman Adams, I believe Councilman Judd was there, and I think Councilman Whipple was there. It was pretty cool to watch. I, I could tell you at ten o'clock when it first started, I was nervous. Um, by ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, I'm guessing a hundred, hundred-and-twenty-five, so it's something to build off of. Um, pretty exciting. Christmas, we always do a great job, I want, we want to build up on that, too. You know, we, we've got to think about our businesses in our community, and as a small business owner myself in the past, up here on this mountain, pretty much my whole adult life, you know, it's that season where you, you have the, the summer visitors leaving, and you wait for snow. We pray for snow, we have to have snow. We've become a hundred percent a tourist town, and, and we've got to think about that. And I can tell you, the businesses on this mountain, if any of them are watching, um, this council is very concerned. We are, we are working on some things now to, to better that, um, in the future, you know, with especially moving forward on, on, on this activity center possibly, and a lot of things happening, and, but I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of businesses in our community, and we, we are praying for snow, but this council and our city is very concerned, and we are working on what we need to do to make this town a destination with or without snow. And I think through the holidays is, is what I want to attack the most. I, I think the city park, we could blow that up, and maybe every Saturday we have a food truck out there or something, and people can walk around through the lights, close the park off, and nothing but Christmas, just some thoughts, it really is. But I just want the small businesses in our community to know that every person on this D S, and city manager, our whole entire staff is very, very concerned. I know there's a lot of talking in town without the snow. I couldn't imagine. You know, my business was the collision business, and when everybody left, I waited for snow, and of course, then that brings the people up here, and unfortunately slip and slide, but that's the nature of the business. But think of a motel, a restaurant, that everybody left, think of any business on this mountain. And so we're, we are working on some things, and we, we're definitely very, very, very concerned, but, um, just want to let you know, hang in there, we're, we're, we're doing the best we can, and we got some ideas we're going to push, and we'll bring them out soon, but we definitely need to turn this town into a destination. We always do it for July, I have friends that come up here every year, they plan it every year, stay a whole week. That's an easy one, that's a destination, they want to get out of the valley, but now with winter time coming, we need those same people to sit there and go, we need to go look at what's going on in Shoal, so that's something we're working on, so be patient. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. Uh, as you know, we're getting ready to start our city, uh, budget process for twenty-twenty-six. Can't believe that, that's the number. We're, we're holding town hall budget meetings, uh, specifically for citizen input on Thursday, January thirtieth at six P M. here in council chambers. And just a reminder, all budget meetings are open to the public. If you need any of those dates, you can look on our website. And just to remind you, the Turn of the Card Community Center will be celebrating, uh, a free Groundhog Day breakfast on Friday, January thirty-first, from six to ten A M. at the community center, that's at three-oh-one Eastern Hill. Everyone's invited to attend that breakfast. And just in Public Works Projects, uh, you might see that they've started building the, the restroom over by the Shoal Lake spillway, that project's going up, and then we're going to be having some repairs on our sunken manholes, so just be aware of those, go around town. That's all.
Thanks, sir. And, and just to reiterate about the, the budget, we sure like people to talk to us about the budget before the budget, not after the budget. We always, we always have people concerned about, why didn't we do this, why didn't we do this? This is, your time's coming up, so get all your friends out there, people watching, man, we need your input. If you don't, can't come to the meetings, definitely contact the city manager, because we, we definitely need your input. Schedule our meetings.
Just a reminder, uh, our January twenty-first meeting, you'll see there on the agenda, there's a six P M. study session. That's to go over, as we talked about in our retreat, to have this one, the State Historic Preservation Office is coming up to give us some more information on that. That'll be at six, and then we'll have our budget study session right after that, around six-thirty, so just a reminder for that meeting, it's at six-thirty-one.
Okay. Well, if that's all, let's have a great twenty-twenty-five, everyone. Uh, be safe out there, pray for snow. There's no more business before this council, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.